Mr. President.
Please stand for the pendulum and remain standing for our invocation by Councilmember Gray.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just wanted to share with all of you, we had a little spike in violence in the past couple of weeks, and in one of those instances that hit very close to home was one of our staff persons within the city council office seen toward attendance, and just wanted to take the opportunity to reflect that as a general today, and I just wanted to take a minute, a minute of silence to pray for and keep Cindy and her family in prayer.
City Clerk certifies publication in daily record on March 30th, and knows for a pre-council and regular city council meeting April 3rd, 2012. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome. This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage of debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Today, we have a special visitor from the Republic of South Sudan, Mr. Bor Gatwich, who is a member of the National Legislative Assembly of the Republic of South Sudan. And Mr. Gatwich, if you would please like to take the podium, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. At this juncture, I would like to thank Mr. President of Omaha City Council, Thomas Mulligan, and his vice, Gary Garnett, and other members of the council for giving me this opportunity to give a statement on this setting. Also, I would like to forward this appreciation to people and government of the United States of America for the support that they give to our people during the struggle, and also for the support that they are giving now when we established this state some months ago. Some few hours ago, our president, Salva Kimayadit, talked over the phone with the president of the United States of America, Barack Obama, regarding the issues that are very vital to our existence. Currently, we have a lot of challenges as a new state in African soil. Still, we have problems with the Republic of Sudan on border issues and also on the detainees. We have around 1 million people still in the north who are still to be moved back to the south, and we have a lot of issues that we need to discuss and resolve physically, but this is not going that way. Currently, they are fighting around the border, and also our oil is shut down where we get around 98 percent of our revenue. So as a government, we have a lot of challenges where we need the support of the people and the government of the United States on these challenging times. And that's why I've come here to also talk to our community who have been resettled here in the United States during the war, so that I can also mobilize them and they can support us morally or even financially, so that we can also stand on our feet. Briefly, I'm a member of parliament in the Republic of South Sudan, and I'm representing around 145,000 people in that parliament, and I'm a member of the Land, Natural Resources, and Environment Committee, and I'm heading a subcommittee for land. And we have passed a lot of legislation firstly, legislation on regard to our sovereignty as a state, and also legislation on how we can manage our economy, and also on how we can give other services like education, health, and other things. So we are a new country, but we have made a lot of progress so far, but generally, we need the help of international community so that we don't end up a failed state in the African soil. Otherwise, thank you very much. I appreciate the services that this state is giving to our community who have been resettled here. This is the state where most of our people are living. I've understood that there are around 150,000 refugees from Sudan who are living in this state, and so this is the most populous state where our people are residing, and that's why I've come here to also meet with our people, to also inform them about what is happening in Sudan and in South Sudan, and also to also advise them on how to become a better citizen in the United States, so that they are not also a burden to this country. They should be a better citizen that also give back to this country. Otherwise, thank you very much for this opportunity, and may God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Please enjoy your stay in Omaha and in the United States. Mr. Clerk.
Next is a resolution that Omaha City Council designated April 3rd, 2012, as Youth Leadership of Omaha Day.
Public hearing on agenda item number five begins now. Are there any proponents?
If I could have Emily and Bob come up. State your name and your address, please.
I'm Emily Martin, and I live at 17308 Pine Circle, Omaha, Nebraska.
And I am Bob Leddy, and I live at 3605 South 118th Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Would you tell us a little bit about your organization, please?
On behalf of Youth Leadership Omaha, we would like to thank Councilmember Thompson and the rest of the council for recognizing us here today. Youth Leadership Omaha provides 40 high school students each year with the opportunity to further develop leadership skills, but more importantly, to give back to our community. Each year, we participate in a variety of community service activities, such as volunteering at local nonprofits, donating goods to local food pantries and shelters, and deciding on a mission statement that addresses a cause which we then raise money to support. This year, we have contributed 164 hours of service to the CROCK Center, the Open Door Mission, and Habitat for Humanity. We also conducted a holiday drive at eight local high schools where we collected food, clothing, and other goods for the Santa Francis House and the Open Door Mission.
Our mission for the 2011-2012 year is to strive to support families of children suffering from chronic health issues through providing assistance with organizations that help with medical, domestic, and recreational needs. We partner with the Omaha Community Foundation. We have conducted our own fundraisers at local restaurants, and we seek out local philanthropists to raise money for our mission. Our money will be given to organizations such as Angels Among Us, Camp Kindle, and Heartland Equine Therapeutic Riding Academy, and possibly some others. So far this year, we have raised $7,000. So this year, we have performed 164 hours of community service, collected 11 carloads of goods to be donated to local shelters, and have raised $7,000 to support children suffering with chronic health issues. However, we are by no means finished. We are still raising money and working within our community to help make Omaha a better place. We are continuing to provide the youth of Omaha with opportunities to become leaders and ultimately make a difference by giving back. Thank you.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to read the resolution into the record, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Whereas Youth Leadership of Omaha, otherwise known as YLO, is a 19-year-old organization affiliated with the Creighton University Business School dedicated to developing leadership skills for metro area sophomores, juniors, and senior high school students. And whereas this organization of 40-plus metro area ambassadors participates in volunteer community activities to assist such programs as Habitat for Humanity, Santa Francis House, Stephen House, Open Door Ministries, and assisting disabled children in hospitals and centers, to name only a few of their activities. And whereas this metro-wide volunteer youth organization is making a positive and lasting impact on the community through their assistance while developing hands-on leadership for high school students. And whereas YLO has designated a year-long major emphasis for 2012 to assist families with children suffering from chronic health issues by assisting the organizations dedicated to the mission, now therefore, be it resolved by this city council that Omaha designates April 3rd, 2012 as Youth Leadership Omaha Day. I would like to read that into the record and then move the approval.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
And thank you, young people, for setting the role model for others to watch, and we thank you for your service to the community. And it sounds to me like you're not doing it just to get graduation credit. I know some of the schools, they make you do it in order to graduate, but from my visit with you, I think you're doing it from your heart, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is recognition of Jesse Cuevas.
Mr. Garnett. Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for the Parks and Recreation Committee to step in front of the Diaz, and Jesse Cuevas, would you come forward, please, and join that committee? I get the pleasure of reading a proclamation into the record. Whereas Jesse Cuevas was born and raised in the shadows of Rosenblatt Stadium and is a lifelong Sado. And whereas Jesse began his career with the city of Omaha as a ball shagger in 1969, and in 1976, he was hired as a part-time seasonal club boy, and in 1984, was hired as a full-time employee of the city of Omaha. Jesse was named Stadium Superintendent, Head's Groundkeeper at Rosenblatt Stadium in 1986, a position he has held until March of 2011. And whereas Jesse served as head groundskeeper at Rosenblatt Stadium, which hosted the nationally acclaimed NCAA College World Series throughout this time, and superbly groomed fields of Rosenblatt annually received high acclaim from the Columbia Broadcasting System and ESPN broadcasters, which reflected favorably upon city government and the Omaha community. And whereas Jesse Cuevas received national acclaim by winning the George Toma Groundskeeping Award for Excellence in his field in 2004, the American League Keeper of the Year in 1992, and in 2010, the Golden Spike Award. And whereas Jesse Cuevas will retire on April 13, 2012, after 43-plus years of distinguished variety of services to the city of Omaha. Now therefore, we, the city council, the city of Omaha, do hereby declare the 13th day of April 2012 as Jesse Cuevas Day. And we're not done yet, Jesse. From the College World Series Inc., Omaha, Catherine Morrissey representing us, she's in our audience today. Dear Jesse, on behalf of the College World Series of Omaha Inc. Board of Directors, I'd like to extend our congratulations to you on the occasion of your retirement. As a city employee for 43 years, your work at Rosenblatt Stadium did not go back to the first game of the College World Series in Omaha, but it came close. More than almost anyone else, you understand that the national championship of collegiate baseball is not just an athletic contest. It is a source of civic pride and a part of our Omaha identity. Unlike the student athletes who played at Rosenblatt Stadium, your day started much earlier and ended much later. Your dedication, along with that of your grounds crew, resulted in more cherished memories than likely you'll know. Generation of fans admired the impeccably groomed field and enjoyed sitting in the rainbow-colored seats that you repaired before each session. Making Rosenblatt the home of the College World Series was a labor of love for you, and it showed. Not only were your tireless efforts recognized by the fans and student athletes, but also by the American Baseball Coaches Association, or commonly known as ABCA, when they presented you with their meritorious service award in 2007. Thank you for many years of devoted service to the College World Series. With our warmest wishes for your future, signed John D. Deising, Jr., College World Series, Inc., Omaha. Congratulations, Jesse, and best of luck. And if you ever get lonely for a lawn job, come see me. Jesse, if you want to step up to the microphone here and say a few words, please. You've earned it, my friend.
Well, thank you, Council President Mulligan, Vice President Garnett, and honorable members. Those of you that know me know I've rarely been at a loss of words, but when Warren Weaver, good man that he is, called me and said that they were going to honor me in this way, I was genuinely speechless. I started out working in a city facility and stayed there practically my whole career. I always thought that civil service meant something more than sometimes what is portrayed in the papers. It meant exactly what the word said, service to the city. I'd look at it as an honor to not only for this, but to represent the men and women that worked at Rosenblatt Stadium and turn that facility into a national shrine. And on behalf of my family that's here, my brother, my mother, and my sister, I'd like to thank you all for this great honor, and I hope in the future I can continue to serve the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, just very quickly, if you don't mind.
Mr. Gray.
Jesse and I go back, I don't know how many years, and I'm not going to say how many years, but Jesse, you made the College World Series. For those of us who were journalists, and especially those of us who had to carry those cameras, which began very heavy and ended up very light as we went through the process of changing cameras, one of the things that was always wonderful about covering the World Series, College World Series, was something I had to do every year. Jesse made it fun, and so my personal congratulations to you, and good luck in retirement, my brother.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to add my personal congratulations as well. I'm sure I don't go back as far as Mr. Gray does with Mr. Cuevas, but it goes back at least 12 years to my service in the mayor's office and as a member of the College World Series Board of Directors. And in that role, frequent conversations with the NCAA back in the days where the College World Series contract was year-to-year discussions as opposed to the 25-year arrangement we have now. And those conversations weren't always easy, but one thing that was always easy was knowing Jesse's long-term relationship with the NCAA, their confidence in him. I went way beyond keeping it an impeccable field that they could count every year, but I'm convinced that that relationship also helped renew that contract every year for the entire city of Omaha, which is a huge benefit to our entire community. So Jesse is remarkable from that standpoint as well, and we appreciate your service and wish you the best of luck.
Ben, I think you were covering the College World Series on radio days, is that correct?
They had stolen tablets in those days.
Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I mean, we could all go on all day about great memories of Rosenblatt, but mine and with his crew, as a testament to how late they stayed working, can tell you, as a dad of two daughters who went through Girl Scouts and had the Camp Rosenblatt experience, it's not somewhere to go to sleep at night, because they're working throughout the night to clean the facility with leaf-blowing machines and lights are on. And so I'm sure you had all sorts of trepidation allowing Girl Scouts all over your field and with tents and reminding people not to put their pegs into the ground so they wouldn't put holes in your water lines. But that was my memory, and how late your crew actually stayed and worked was just phenomenal to get the place clean and ready for the next day. So thank you, Jesse, and good luck to you.
Mr. Clerk.
Item number seven, ordinance to amend an existing PK parking overlay district in an R7 medium-density multifamily residential district located at northwest of 48th and Douglas Streets, Lot 9 Dundee Ridge, replat to approve the parking plan. A Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mark Verzey, on behalf of the applicant Children's Hospital, 409 South 17th Street. Answer any questions. Appreciate your consideration and approval today.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 10, Jerry's Bar, 6301 Military Avenue. New application, old location, it's a Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine begins now. Are there any proponents? Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, six to zero. Liquor, item number nine, Jerry's Bar, 6301 Military Avenue. New application, old location, it's a Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Your name?
My name is Robert Ruder.
And your address, please.
5623 Whitmore, Omaha, Nebraska. I have a nice little neighborhood bar that's been there since 1955, and I'd just like to continue doing business as it has been. I'd like to go from a temporary liquor license to a permanent.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 10, Downtown Food Mart, 318 South 16th Street. New application, old location, it's a package liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 begins now. Are there any proponents? Please state your name and address.
My name is Ryan Delosier. I reside in at 3336 Fontanelle Boulevard in Omaha. I have been managing this store for the last three years, and now I am taking over the business from the old owner, and I like to keep the liquor license as it is. So I'm applying for the liquor license under GYGT Corporations.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, ma'am. Hi, I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
And one of the things that we're trying to do is rehabilitate 16th Street, and over the course of the last couple of years, the police officer who regularly works on 16th Street has repeatedly told us about problems that he has with drunken pedestrians that traverse about that street and that area, and believes that in many cases that the people who are problems have been going out in and out of your store, and some others buying single servings of beer and alcohol. So I wanted to ask you what, if any, single sales you'll be having in terms of alcohol for beer and liquor.
Okay, since I took over the management on that store about three years, the problem's been really decreased a lot that I did turn away with. I stopped selling what they used to sell, the small single cans of a beer, which I don't. And the main problem is, I think, because of there are bus stops there. So they're standing and waiting for a bus, and they're coming in and out and buy liquor. So anyway, I do not sell any small cans of a single-serving beer at all.
Do you sell anything at 40 ounces or less?
Yes, all we have is a 24-ounce can.
Do you sell any 50-milliliter bottles of liquor that we call the airplane shot?
I do.
And what are your plans with regard to continuing to sell those?
Well, if that's going to decrease the problems, I will stop selling small portion, I mean, small size of the liquor.
Well, would you agree to not sell under that the smallest container for liquor will be 750 milliliters for distilled spirits and six-packs and above for beer?
If I have to, I guess I can cooperate with that matter.
So would you agree with that?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, what would she need to do to, would there be, Mr. Mumgarth?
Yeah, let's have our deputy city attorney come up.
I'm Mumgarth, Deputy City Attorney. Clerk and I will put that in writing later, and so we have documentation of it, and the ordinances provide that if she fails to keep that promise, that it would be grounds for the council revoking or canceling the license.
Okay, so you've heard enough on the record that we're sufficient?
Yes.
We don't need to amend anything, or?
No.
It's just she's agreed to that condition?
It's just a representation that she has made as a condition in exchange for receiving the license.
Okay, so I guess we can ask her formally, you would agree then, as a condition of your approval of your license, to sell distilled spirits in no less than a container of 750 milliliters or greater, and for beer, six-packs, 12-packs, but not single sales, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. With that condition, I would move to approve.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 11, Salgado's Mexican Grill, 5402 North 90th Street. Catering liquor license, new application, old location, they presently hold a Class I license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name is Valentin Salgado, and I apply for adding to catering liquor license for my business. I'm trying to grow my business. And I live on 8203 North 37th Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 12, Recovery Room at 416 11th Street. Request permission for an addition, they're present Class C liquor license, location of a beer garden approximately 33 by 20 to the south. H is a communications opposing.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Dave Beckley, 2106 South 47th Street, on behalf of Paulies, Inc. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents?
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number 12, Salgado's Mexican Grill, 5402 North 90th Street. Catering liquor license, new application, old location, they presently hold a Class I license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name is Valentin Salgado and I apply for adding to catering license, liquor license for my business, I'm trying to grow my business. And I live on 8203 North 37th Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number 12, The Recovery Room at 416 11th Street. Request permission for an addition, they're class, present Class C liquor license, location of a beer garden approximately 33 by 20 to the south. A is a communications opposing.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Dave Beckley, 2106 South 47th Street. On behalf of Paulies Inc. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Dave, would you just confirm, the opponents that wrote a letter and were concerned about having outdoor, or music broadcast outdoors?
Right.
I understand, that's not your business plan here.
Right.
This is simply an area for people to go out and smoke and bring their drink with them, that you will not have any outdoor speakers.
That's correct. We talked to her, she did call and we did have a conversation with her and we guaranteed that for her, so.
Thank you. I would move to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 13, Old Mattress Factory Bar and Grill, 501 North 13th Street. Request permission for a beer garden on April 13th through the 15th, uh, from 10 to 2, from 10 a.m. to 2 a.m. with music until midnight and A is the same location for a beer garden on May 25th through the 28th, 10 a.m. to 2 a.m. with music ending at 1 a.m.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mark Inenbach, 1601 Dodge Street. On behalf of LLC Inc. Just by way of clarification, members of the council, the first request is the Jimmy Buffett concert and the only night that music will be played, and that's till midnight. It will be on Saturday night, the night of the concert. The second request is for the decoration or Memorial Day weekend and the only night that music will be played for that request is on Sunday night through the night before Decoration Day. Are there any questions?
Counselor, is there any, any reason why the one, the music is just until midnight and then the second is until 1 a.m.?
Uh, just the status of the event, sir. Uh, I think the Buffett concert, people probably tired by the time midnight and then 1 a.m. is, is over Decoration Day and we're trying to do something different down there from Memorial Day and so we're asking to do it until, until 1 a.m. We don't believe that, the one issue that we've had in the past is some issues with the Hilton that we're trying to work out and I don't believe over that weekend, specifically on Sunday night, uh, the occupancy there will be that great anyway.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you give us, can you tell us where you are with the, uh, with the work that you're attempting to do, working with the Hilton to, you know, do sound checks to find out, you know, if you're going to have a problem, especially when it comes up on the College World Series. I, I understand what you're saying here and I don't necessarily disapprove of that, but I want to kind of know where you are in terms of, you know, working out this arrangement with the Hilton.
Yes, Councilman, we have followed up and we've had some discussions with the sound engineer and are in the process of doing some testing and once that's been accomplished, we're going to meet with the hotel, provide them with the results of that test and make sure that hopefully everything can be worked out and they're happy.
Okay, can you make that available also to the, at least the liquor committee here on the council, if not all the council members?
Be happy to.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Gurnett?
Motion approved.
No question, I just got a, a thought has hit me, over all of these years, especially after, you can sit down. Every time that, uh, the, the Old Mattress Factory sets up a tent, it seems like the old market turns on the close sign. They don't have, their business seems to go down. I don't, I don't know how to change that, but it does worry me when, uh, it, it would seem that one business would have a distinct advantage over several, especially in an entertainment district that we have in the, in the great old market atmosphere. So with that said, I mean, I'm not, I'm going to support this, but I'd just like to record to reflect that, uh, that, that does bother me after all of these years and then with the Century Link up and running, TD Ameritrade up and running, uh, I, I guess it was a, a good business plan for the Old Mattress Factory to be where they're at, but I hate to see other businesses suffer. I, I know that I get some calls, I'm not sure if Councilman Jerem does or not, but since that's his area, but, uh, it does bother me, just for the record. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Jerem?
Actually, the, the perception is, is that there is a drain on business, but when reality, the Downtown Business Improvement District has studied it and has found that there's no empirical data to back that up, that in fact, that the business in the old market continues to thrive despite the perception that there is a drain to Noto. And I had that initial perception too and it's something that came up with the liquor committee. But the Downtown Business Improvement District, which has members on their board from the old market merchants association and residents, um, all met and there's a perception that during the College World Series that you'd expect to see a tremendous uptick in business in the old market and that they don't have data to show that that ever did indeed occur. I suspect though, with the, the economic development in the old market, in terms of the new Hyatt place there, that'll actually put bodies there at night in addition to the embassy suites, that you will see increased business opportunities and more pedestrians in the old market. So, yeah, I, I join you, I had that suspicion and I think others did too, but when we had the independent objective, people look at it, they just don't find anything yet to suggest that that's the case.
Mr. Gray, I just wanted to clarify, so we're, you're, you're okay with the 1 a.m. or is this 10, is this pending?
No, it's pending, it's, it's, I'm, I'm okay with the 1 a.m., but he says they're going to get back to us, so I'm, I'm just, I'm counting that they will get back to us.
Okay, okay.
I'm supporting that.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero.
Item number 14, Rojo's Mexican Grill, 1701 Wright Plaza. Request permission for a special designated license for a beer garden on May 5th from 11 a.m. to 2 a.m. with music until 1:45 a.m.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
That's me. I'm Heidi Dunning, I live at 15309 Whitmore Street in Bennington, Nebraska. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard?
Thank you, um, Ms. Dunning? Dunning? Is that right? Um, I have a couple of questions for you. Please. On May 5th, is there an event going on that you want this outside, um, activity to be going on and the music to 1:45?
Technically Cinco de Mayo.
Okay, at Cinco de Mayo. All right, well, I, I know where you're at, you're right in the middle of Legacy there, but we have been pretty consistent, um, with stopping music at midnight. In some cases, we let it go till 1. I'm a little uncomfortable with the 1:45, even though it's in the middle.
You know what?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I totally didn't know what I was doing, I filled that out. This is the first time I've ever applied it for a beer, beer garden, but we changed it to 1 o'clock.
So the, so you will have the beer garden till 2, but the music till 1?
Correct.
That's what it will be? Okay. And where you have your beer garden outside for Cinco de Mayo, it's in a fenced in area then?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so I, thank you.
No problem.
I'll move for approval with the condition that the music will end at 1 a.m.
Uh, she needs to ask for an amendment, I believe, you're asking for amendment to make it 1 o'clock, correct?
I believe so.
For the music, for the, just the music?
Yes.
All right, okay. Let's, let's do it by amending it to 1 a.m. for the music.
Okay, amend music to 1 a.m. then.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero. Item number 15, Chevy's at 2607 North Main Street. Request permission for a special designated beer garden at the, uh, at 2606 North Main Street on June 1st, 2012, from 6 a.m. to 1 a.m. with music ending at 1 a.m.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Jeremy Edelman. I reside at 15824 Parker Street. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Oops. My fault. Oops. Mr. Thompson? It's my fault. Okay. Um, is this a Thursday night?
Do you have to redraw the oops?
No, no, Mr. Thompson, it's a Friday night.
It's a Friday night?
Yes, sir.
And the event that you're having is?
It's, it's called Chevy Fest. Uh, we had it, we held it last year, um, and we had a great turnout, um, and we just kind of wanted to continue the tradition for our second year, so.
Okay, and last year, when did you let the music go to?
Um, last year, we, it was during the Elkhorn Days, which happened to also be during the College World Series, so, um, you, um, there was a midnight stipulation on it to last year, so.
And so you're wanting to go an hour later than?
Yes, sir.
Than what you, um, what about the abutting neighborhood? Have you talked with them about?
Um, as far as the residential aspect, um, to the, um, approximate area, we have not had any, um, questions or concerns from any of the neighbors. Um, if they were willing to have a meeting with me or, uh, our additional partners in it, I would be more than happy to address the situation.
Okay.
Um, but as far as last year, we had, uh, no problems or no complaints with the event last year.
With midnight?
With midnight, yes.
I'm, I'm definitely going to approve this, or at least make the motion to approve it, but I'm, I'm wondering, do we take a chance and let you do 1 o'clock this year and see how it happens or, um, can you, can you make do with 12 again? Can you comment on that?
Um, we can definitely make 2, um, make do, excuse me, make do with, uh, with midnight again. Um, you know, we just kind of thought that since we weren't up against the College World Series this year, um, you know, we'd asked the council to allow us to try it till 1 a.m. to see, uh, the success rate, to see what kind of response we got and, and, and then move forward from there, so.
Okay.
I, I'm definitely okay with, with midnight if, if that's what the council requires.
Well, we just approved a 1 o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't want to be a stick in the mud, so I'll go ahead and, and let this through, but, uh, can we agree, have a gentleman's agreement that if I do get calls complaining that next year we'll go back to midnight?
Absolutely. Happy to oblige, yep.
Okay, then I move the approval then.
Thank you.
Second.
Sir, but you, you did indicate that you have not talked to the owners, or not the owners, but I mean, you're adjoining property owners, so they don't know that 1 o'clock.
Um, last year, we, we did have a meeting with some of the homeowners around there and, um, they were okay with it. Um, we talked to them after last year, they were okay with the music. Um, so that was, uh, we had talked with them last year. Now, we have not had a meeting with any of the homeowners this year on it, um, but it, you know, like I say, stated, I would be more than happy to meet with anybody and, you know, and make, make sure it was okay.
That might be a good idea, just to give a heads up, that the music's going to be going to 1.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. President, uh, last year, I believe it was on Wednesday, but because of leap year, then it's now on Friday.
Actually, it was, it would have been a Saturday night last year.
Oh, I'm really off.
Yeah, it was, it was, we're doing it, uh, almost an entire month earlier, that way we didn't want to compete with the World Series and, you know.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Mr. Mr. Cunningham, did you have a comment?
Uh, just for the city council, uh, your information, uh, that might modify how you proceed, um, not this business, but the Hardscapes business itself, um, the, the planning department does have some action against that business for non-conformance with zoning and building codes, uh, and we have been working with them since June. Uh, it's my understanding that they are closing down their operation until such time as we can resolve these issues. I don't know whether, uh, you want to approve this contention upon, uh, the, the Hardscapes business resolving their issues before they have something on their property, uh, which is across the street. So again, this is not against, this, this business that's before us today, but where they're having the event is on property that we do have some actions against.
So what is your recommendation?
So to the extent that their beer garden may overstep certain boundaries, that could coincide with that based upon how Hardscape has laid out and used their property. So again, I just bring it to your attention so that you go in with your eyes wide open and as far as making a decision.
You might want to question the licensee here as to how they're going to use the property that night and make sure that that's going to be in compliance.
Yes, I can.
Would you just address that?
Absolutely, would love to address that. Basically, with the property that it's on.
If you could state your name.
Oh, sorry, Jeremy Edelman. With the property that it's on, there is an area of about 250 feet by 200 that we will be fencing in with one main gate and one exit gate. The main gate is for entrance only with security and, you know, wristbands and everything out. The exit gate would be only for emergencies only. So the actual area of the beer sale, beer and spirit sales would be within a fenced area of approximately 250 by 200 feet.
And all the restrooms?
All the restrooms would be located in that area as well.
And the portable?
Yep, portable ones, yep.
Not going into the building?
No, absolutely not. No, it's strictly an outdoor lot that we would be using.
I would offer the planning department in our current planning area to meet with you and look at and make sure that the way you lay it out is within the zoning regulations and be more than happy to do that.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. President, I'm okay with that. All right, thank you. Mr. Festerson.
I think I am too, after that explanation, but one more question. So you're renting the outdoor property then, or the parking lot? Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's not quite a parking lot. It is a, it is, it's kind of a, it's just an outdoor lot. They have an outdoor area that sets up perfect for what would be in like an outdoor event. So it's not necessarily a parking lot, but it is, you know, like I said, 250 by 200, kind of wide open space, for lack of a better term, so.
Mr. Cunningham, it sounds like it's more of a layout issue as opposed to a public safety or code issue. Is that accurate to say of the property he's describing?
I believe part of the problem is that they are actually using part of the alley, which is public right-of-way. And again, I've been on the peripheral of this, and that's why I offer that we certainly will sit down with the applicant and work through those issues. It well could be that your 200 by 200 may, based upon the way the Hardscapes is using the property, may in fact violate the same alley, public right-of-way, but we would, I'm more than willing to help you make sure that you do not.
Okay.
Perhaps we can make that a condition of approval? Would that be appropriate? Mr. Mungard? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
That is correct. If you needed to then lease part of the right-of-way, we could work with you.
Yeah.
Because we are the department that you work through and lease on public right-of-way also.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I modify my motion to, that he has to get with the planning department and get these things cleared up. That's good. Subject to having our approval go all the way through to the end.
What are these things?
Okay, all right.
It's in the record, so we have it.
Have to meet with the planning department, and if it is an alley issue, that they'll resolve it through a lease.
Okay.
Yeah, we need a second. We have a second.
Roll call. Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen. YFC Incorporated requests permission for a special designated license for a beer garden at Stinson Park, 6707 Center Street on August 11th, from 11:00 AM to midnight with music ending at midnight.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixteen begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Mr. President, distinguished council members, my name is Trey Brashear. My address is 711 North 108th Court, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, YFC Inc., which is better known by our trade name, which is the Maha Music Festival. We are here today requesting an extension of our liquor license. Previously, we would like to extend our liquor license until midnight. Also have music at our event this year, which is set for August 11th till midnight. The goal being to expand the scope of the festival and be able to add more bands on the two stages we have by going one hour later. We have already spoken to Exarban Village Merchants, the surrounding area, and they are accepted and supportive of us going for this extra hour.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents?
Michael App, 1124 North Happy Hollow Boulevard.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Brashear and Mr. App for being so proactive. I think it was a few months ago that you approached Councilmember Festerson, myself, maybe some others, with your idea because of the success of the event last year at Stinson Park in Exarban Village about having an increased hour of operations. So you reached out to the merchants and I reached out to the Exarban Elmwood Park Neighborhood Association, and there was unanimity of support for the event, and everyone suggested you did a nice job, so happy to support it and make a motion to approve and wish you a lot.
Second.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, just a brief comment too. We recognized Youth Leadership Omaha at the beginning of this meeting, and this music festival, Maha, that we're talking about today, I think was born out of a conversation that happened during Youth, during Record Leadership Omaha attendees, the two gentlemen in front of us here several years ago. And I just wanted to give you a chance to talk about the festival a bit more for a couple of seconds, because it's a nice one. I went to it several years in a row. We helped you with the mayor's office, I think, publicize the first event you had there, which originally was down at the riverfront, but now at Stinson Park, and attracts people from all across the country, and fulfills a niche in Omaha we don't have right now in terms of indie music and facilitating and promoting that type of, those type of interests. So I wanted to give you a second to talk about the economic impact and what you've seen as it's grown over the years, because I know you've crunched those numbers, and it does do have quite a benefit for the city.
Thank you, Councilman Festerson. Mike App, and with all due respect and apologies to the city parks where we were down last year, we're now at Exarban Village, and that was a function of grassy open space that can accommodate, you know, 4,000 to 5,000 people. But if this proposal to go an extra hour is approved, what's interesting about this that doesn't get talked about a lot is the thriving music scene in this community used to get a lot of press nationally, and what we're trying to do is reintroduce that national press by highlighting local bands. So the allowance of an extra hour gives us the opportunity to highlight two more local bands, and additionally, we'll have a free all-ages showcase in a neighborhood-based establishment prior to Maha. So that allows us to do more in the community. But right now, there's 30 states that are represented in the ticket-buying public for the Maha Music Festival, and we hope to expand it with the acceptance of this proposal. Thank you to the council.
Great, thank you. I know it's part of our list, and I'm sure on the top 10 music cities in the country just recently too, so we appreciate you guys doing this event for the community.
Our pleasure.
Roll call.
And if I could just, just as a moment privilege, and this is coming from the guy who has the drum set in his basement still, so you can tell why he's so enthusiastic about it, so.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Item's removed. Consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items number 18 and 19 were held on March 27th, 2012. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Item's removed. Consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items number 18 and 19 were held on March 27th, 2012. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 24. Resolution, the purchase based upon the proposal, turnkey mobile in the amount of $1,83,800 for the purpose of 130 Panasonic Cruiser video cameras for the Omaha Police Department and a payment to dot com for service hardware is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 24 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment, and I wanted to ask the finance director a question in a moment, but just as a response to some questions that I think myself and some other council members have been getting. Ms. Pacrotella, this is being paid for, and I do support the purchase of the cameras, but this is being paid for from the 11 budget, correct?
Pam Pacrotella, Finance Director, that's correct.
And it's an unbudgeted amount, though? It was not in the 11 budget?
It was not originally in the 11 budget. We transferred funds in order to cover that additional expense.
Okay. Because I know at the end-of-the-year report, the 11 budget, we were over budget, and at the fourth quarter report, there was a report and made reference to reasons that we were over budget. But is it true that this amount of money, it came from another account, but it didn't necessarily have to be used just for Cruiser cameras? It could have been used for other items also, correct?
The amount came from another item that was under budget. It could have been transferred anywhere, if that's your question.
Right, okay. So we made the decision in the 2011 budget to purchase these?
That's correct.
And, and, okay, all right. I think it's just important to clarify that. Thank you.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Grenat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Resolutions. Item number 29. Resolution attached amendments to the Omaha Council plus fiscal year 2008 and 2011 solidated submission for community planning and development programs are hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 29 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?